How still it is. I can see stars through the trees merging with the lights of the skyline. I really love New York City, but I also have this hunger for solitude. And when I'm walking now, the moon is up. I have this beautiful place all to myself. I hike on, and another thing I love here, there's water everywhere, especially after I cross over into Central Park. I pass a winding stream that tumbles down in little waterfalls. At sunrise, I reach what may be the wildest corner of Central Park, 36 acres of hills and forests near the Upper West Side called The Ramble. I climb an outcrop of stone as the skyscrapers turn orange and rose and blue. Millions and millions of people all around me here. It's just birds and wind in the trees and the sun rising over the city. Brian Mann, NPR News in Central Park in New York City.
You're listening to Here and Now.
Hi, I'm Alonzo Boden from Wait, Wait Don't Tell Me. I'm a car guy. I'm so into cars, I change cars like people change shoes. I figure over my lifetime, that's cost me probably the gross domestic product of New Zealand. Listen, when it's time for you to trade up, think about this station. Your old car could pay for Morning Edition or Wait, Wait Don't Tell Me. So come on, turn your old ride into the programs you love. Here's how.
For more information, go to our website, radioiq.org.
One study showed that people living in areas more affected by Trump's tariffs were more likely to vote for Trump in 2020. And I think that stems from the feeling that even if tariffs didn't actually benefit these people, they felt that at least Trump was trying to do something about U.S. manufacturing.
I'm Michael Barbaro. That's today on The Daily from The New York Times.
Funding for Here and Now comes from Olin College of Engineering. Their campus is a living laboratory where students experiment and take risks in a hands-on engineering education. At Olin, they believe engineering is for everyone. Olin.edu. And WBUR presenting Endless Thread, a podcast about the internet's untold histories and unsolved mysteries. From stories about a mountain of dishware in the woods to the world's largest glitter consumer, Endless Thread, listen wherever you get your podcasts.
This is Here and Now. Special education teachers are in big-time demand in this country, and the number of students with disabilities is rising. Federal data shows seven and a half million students required special education services as of the 2023 school year. Now President-elect Trump is talking about eliminating the Department of Education, which could put more strain on special education students. Kalen Belsh is covering the story. She's a national reporter with our editorial partner Chalkbeat, the nonprofit education news outlet. Kalen, welcome back.
Thank you for having me.
You know, first off, you report on an increasing shortage of special education teachers. What are the trends behind this?
A lot of districts have long struggled to fill their special education teaching positions. But we've heard, you know, since the pandemic that some districts are having particular challenges. There's been a lot of turnover, and it's a very difficult job. So sometimes it has, you know, districts have a hard time backfilling and keeping their staff. And there's also been a lot of struggles to keep paraprofessionals, who are the people who support teachers in the classroom. And so when there's less support, it can be even more difficult to be a teacher.
Are there more of these specialists kind of leaving their jobs and fewer of them in the pipeline to replace them?
Exactly. The teacher prep programs are not training enough teachers to fill in the gaps.
Yeah, all right. Now meantime, as you report, the demand for these services is rising. There are more students with diagnoses that can be met with special education specialists. So in practice, what is happening in classrooms when students are not receiving these services?
Yeah, a lot of times, schools will increase class sizes so that there's a certified teacher working with them. But that can make the classroom learning environment more challenging. If kids are not getting kind of the behavior and academic support that they need, they might act out in the classroom, which can be disruptive both to them and to their classmates. And in the worst-case scenarios, it can lead to cases where kids might get held down or put in an isolation room, restraint and seclusion. So yeah, there's really big effects. And, you know, kids are not getting their needs met, so they're not learning like they should be.
So for experts in the field watching this, is there agreement on how to fill this gap?
No, I would say there is widespread disagreement about what is the best way to do this. So people have a couple of different ideas, but there is not good agreement about what we should do.
Yeah, well, I mean, as you write, there are suggestions that the federal government foot the bill to trade more of these teachers. But there's one fix, I guess, that some propose that kind of syncs up with what President-elect Trump has been talking about. And that is more school vouchers, giving desperate families more choices for their children. How might choice potentially help these students?
Well, we're seeing some advocates say that what they'd like the incoming Trump administration to do is to try to put forward some kind of federal program that would allow families to take the money that would go to their children if they were in public school and use that in the private marketplace to maybe hire a tutor, hire a teacher, hire a therapist. So it would be on the family, the burden would be on them, but they would have more say over how that money would be spent.
Yeah, yeah. And then speaking of families who are in this pinch, whose schools perhaps don't have the special education teachers their children need, what is the burden on these families?
It's incredibly high. A lot of these families have tried multiple different schools. They've tried different ways to get their kids' needs met, and a lot of them are really desperate. And so they're asking for other options. And there are some states that already have programs like this.
Trump has spoken on the campaign trail about abolishing the Federal Department of Education. Don't know if he would follow through on that, but would that have any bearing on the availability of special education resources for children who need them?
Yeah, I think that it would really depend on kind of how that plan is executed. It would require Congress to step in and take action. But people have made proposals about how funding could change if you got rid of the Department of Education. It might be that states have more control over how that that money is spent. And if a child's civil rights were violated, that's a big question, because a lot of the violations are around disability. And so it could be that another department is investigating that if the Department of Education doesn't exist. And so advocates are a little worried about what that would mean for kids.
Yeah. Now legally, I understand there is a 1975 law that guarantees students with disabilities a right to public education. Is there any talk of undercutting or diluting that legal protection?
I have not heard that. That law is still on the books. And so in order to change that, Congress would have to step in and take action. But I think that there's just concern about how that would be enforced and implemented if there's less staff and if there's not a department kind of watching out for kids and paying close attention to kids with disabilities.
Kalen, before we let you go, just kind of take us back into the into the classroom. What are you learning about the challenges right now with the squeeze of not having enough teachers with this expertise?
You know, after the pandemic, a lot of teachers were not entirely sure if what they were seeing in their classroom was related to a disability or not, because kids were kind of behind. So I know that teachers right now are struggling on top of what already existed to just figure out who has needs and who should be met with special education support and who just needs extra support in the classroom. So it's really challenging time to be a special education teacher.
Hey, we've been talking to Kalen Belsh, national reporter with our editorial partner Chalkbeat, the nonprofit education news outlet. Kalen, always good to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Scott Tong in Washington, D.C.
I'm Peter O'Dowd in Phoenix. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from Landmark College, offering online dual enrollment courses for neurodiverse high school juniors and seniors to earn college credits and prepare for the transition to college. More at landmark.edu/online.
This week on This American Live, Yellowstone Park, two wolf packs charging at each other. One led by a massive.
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council for December the 2nd is hereby called the Order, and I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCourt, to please call the roll.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. And I call, Ms. President. I've asked our Vice Mayor tonight, today, to lead us in the invocation, and I will follow him with the lead and the prayer to lead him. Thank you, Ms. Susan.
Loving Spirit, we are grateful for this season of gratitude. Each and every one of us have much to be thankful for. And we pray that in these few moments, we can pause to express our individual gratitude and our gratitude as a city for all the blessings that we encounter, through our relationships with family and friends and colleagues, through the incredible work that we're able to do together, and for all that we're able to create as community. Bless and keep us in your tender care as we continue to do the good work that you've called us to. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I will call on Councilman Fitzpatrick. If you would give us a motion to come out of a closed meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of City Council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council and attendance.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And I call, Mr. President. Thank you. All right, the first order of business this afternoon is the presentations and acknowledgements. And I'm going to ask Mr. Brian Wells if he could join me at the podium. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm pleased to be here today with Mr. Brian Wells, who, and to recognize him for his great work nationally. As you all know, Brian is the General Manager, he's the General Manager of the Year. He was voted that way by the National Hotel and Lodging Association. And he received the Ordinary Awards. But he's anything except ordinary. We thank Brian. The Ordinary Awards celebrate and honor all of Virginia's restaurants, lodging establishments, hotels, attractions, and more. The awards presented by the Virginia Restaurant Lodging and Travel Association aim to honor those who demonstrate exemplary passion for the hospitality and travel industry that are truly extraordinary, anything but ordinary. Brian Wells, General Manager, Hotel Roanoke and Conference Center, was nominated for the General Manager of the Year, which recognizes a hotel manager or senior manager for his or her extraordinary contributions to Virginia's hotel industry and his or her hotel and its guests. Brian is an innovative leader dedicated to the frontline workers and the community. He's directed three youth apprentices with the Department of Labor and Industry, CTE Program, mentored a two-day career quest spring in the spring of 2023 for highlight, to highlight hospitality career options to students from Roanoke area school districts, and collaborated with the Virginia Western Community College to get their hospitality program up and running, just to name a few. Please join me in congratulating Brian Wells on being named the General Manager of the Year by the Virginia Restaurant Lodging and Travel Association. Let me say I've had the pleasure of working with Brian, and I've also seen Brian Maris around here, for working with him for the last few years. And I've learned more about the hospitality industry than I've ever thought I'd know before. But he does a great job, and I mean this sincerely, because not only is he the General Manager, but Brian is out in the community. He's attended functions out, I see him walking around on some hot sardines in the summer, and they're passing out goodies and certain things. But the fact that he's there, he's not that General Manager that you only see when you go in a hotel. He's out in the community. And I've always enjoyed working with him, appreciate the work that he's done for the hotel. And we have probably one of the better hotels, I think, in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And most people that come in and visit the hotel, and I'm over there for a lot of welcoming to certain groups, they all speak favorably of the hotel, about how friendly people are, how courteous they are. And I attribute that to Brian's leadership. And so I wanted them to come down today to be recognized for that. And sometimes it's something that we may overlook, but Brian just does an exceptional job, and I'm proud to have worked with him for a few years. I'm moving on now, so whoever will replace me on the council is working with the with the good man, Brian Wells. Brian, can you say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here in Roanoke for Hotel Roanoke and Conference Center. It's a wonderful project. And because of the institutional ownership between Virginia Tech University, the foundation, and the city of Roanoke, I get to do some unique things in the hospitality industry, like work in the community and look out for our youth and develop people at all levels. So it's wonderful to be part of a project that's in the eight-time All-American City with a land-grant university that's motto is "Oot prosam, that I may serve." And for a management company whose culture is people-first to be the difference. So it's just great to be able to do all those things here and get all the support that you all provide every day. And I think you'd be a fine innkeeper, sir. So if you need a job in retirement, you know.
He's looking for a job.
We'd love to have you every day.
All right. Brian Wells, ladies and gentlemen. You gotta take a picture of him.
Sure.
And Brian, you know, one of the things that you have to do with recipients of that award, you have to bring us all to dinner, the city clerks, every city manager.
We'll have a fine time.
Yeah, and that fine establishment, we have to all come over for dinner.
Who's budget?
You want to come over?
You should go that. Yep, yep, y'all are, nope, nope, you're good. There we go. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
You know, that's one of the, as I prepare to leave office, that's one of the favorite things I feel that I get to do is to recognize people who are making contributions to make our community better in so many ways. Brian has done that. All right, we're now down to the item number three, which is the hearing assistance upon public matters. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody sign up to speak?
Yes, sir, we do. We have one speaker.
Okay.
And that is Frida Cathcart.
Okay. Good afternoon, Ms. Cathcart.
Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'm Frida Cathcart, the district director representing Roanoke City on the Blue Earth Soil and Water Conservation Board. And I wanted to express my appreciation for meeting with Dr. Patton, Ms. O'Brien, and Ms. Ferguson to discuss ways to help protect the environment in Roanoke City. It was a very productive meeting, and I look forward to following up with them. I wanted to bring to your attention some things that have been come, been addressed to me recently by constituents, especially down 460 that have noticed the removal of the woodlands along 460 and their concerns about the environment. There's also been removal about the tree canopy in southwest on Colonial Avenue as well. And this is a really important issue for Roanoke City. I've been working with the partners that come to the Blue Earth Soil and Water Conservation Board that have to do with the Department of Conservation and Forestry looking for grants to try and help preserve Roanoke's tree canopy. And there's partners, I've been in contact with the AmeriClima Corps, who needs to partner with somebody, which I'm hoping that we can arrange that with Roanoke City to get some grants. I wanted to bring to your attention a really important law that just went into effect this year, the Forest Conservation Act. It addresses the challenges facing Virginia's tree canopies and forests. The law requires the Department of Forestry to conduct comprehensive assessments of the health of Virginia's forests. The assessment will explore various factors contributing to forest loss, such as increased development, invasive species, road construction, and other infrastructure projects. The Forest Conservation Act and the Forestland and Urban Tree Canopy Conservation Plan, I'm going to repeat again, urban tree canopy conservation plan, are vital steps towards reducing deforestation, reducing tree canopy loss, and maintaining the health of our landscapes and human communities. The Forest Conservation Act prioritizes areas adjacent to streams and wetlands. The benefits of preserving and expanding our tree canopies include supporting businesses, biodiversity, and healthy environmental quality. Given the alarming loss of Virginia's tree canopies, having transparent data on where the loss is happening is essential to guide targeted restoration efforts. Beyond temperature regulation, tree canopies serve as natural buffer zones preventing polluted water from entering our rivers and streams. Tree roots stabilize soil, reduce erosion, and filter out water contaminants. This new law demonstrates that environmental protections happen through not only preserving existing resources, but also through recognizing and proactively mitigating the root causes of resource loss. And what's not mentioned here that I don't want it to be overlooked is the importance of the tree canopy and flood resiliency, and how important that is to the city of Roanoke, especially as we see our neighbors in Salem and Roanoke County doing development. And we're at the bottom of that bowl. When they do development with that stormwater that is diverted from them, it's going to end up where we are. So that's really important. I did want to flag to you all that our board, the Blue Earth Soil and Water Conservation Board, is working to facilitate a regional flood resiliency plan. And at this point, Roanoke County does not have a flood resiliency plan and is indicating that they don't want to participate in the effort that we're putting forward with the regional, but Henry County and Franklin County is. So I would encourage those of you that have counterparts in the county that you might want to explain to them how important this is to the city of Roanoke. Water doesn't stop at boundaries, neither does heat, and we need to be mindful of that. As far as suggestions for the city to pursue in protecting our trees as we come to the end of the tree, the year of the tree in Roanoke City, I would like the city to consider placing ordinances in place with environmental impact statements. This happens lots of times with larger projects, but I could see where it could be useful on a local level to have people who have licenses, permits with the city to do tree cutting, that they be evaluated, if there's a healthy tree, maybe have that evaluated and say like, if you take that healthy, large tree out, you're going to hurt your neighbors with the heat. I think that's a very practical thing to ask, and that we all understand. There needs to be more education with that, and I would like to work with the city to make sure that that happens. But sometimes there needs to also be a place where people just don't know any better, and the professionals really should before they cut down a tree. And it takes a professional to cut down a really large tree. So I appreciate your time today, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are all considered to be routine by members of City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the item. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. It's been moved and seconded on the approval of the Consent Agenda, and I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. And Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you. All right, the next agenda. Thank you. All right, the next agenda item is public hearings, we have none. Item number six is petitions and communications, we have none. Item number seven is reports of city officers, the interim city manager briefing, we have none at this time, and there are some items that are recommended for action. The first item, seven, one, is Tinker Creek Greenway Construction Utility Relocation. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of additional funding from the Western Virginia Water Authority for the Tinker Creek Greenway Construction Utility Relocation to the city of Roanoke, authorizing the interim city manager or her designate to execute and file appropriate documents to obtain such additional funds, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Is there any discussion with members of council? Hang on, Madam Clerk, please call it over.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. All right, I'm pleased to recognize at this time our interim city manager, Dr. Patton, for any comments that she may have.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. I have two matters I'll call to your attention. The Wasenia Skate Park Public Open House. The Wasenia Skate Park Public Open House was held last Wednesday, November the 20th, at the Green Goat, and it was well-attended by skaters, cyclists, and neighborhood residents. The most common feedback was the excitement that was shown about the size and variety of features included in the design, which was more than many seemed to have been expecting. The consultant team did not receive any major requests for changes or different features, so the design will move forward largely as presented. The project team is working on developing the stormwater management design to complete the permitting process before moving forward with construction next year. The next is the historic marking unveiling. We are collaborating with Nelson Harris to plan the unveiling of a historical marker for Edward Dudley on December the 12th, 12 at 2:00 PM. The ceremony will take place at the Gilmer and Gainesborough, followed by reception at the Gainesborough Branch Library with remarks by Dr. by Mr. Edward Dudley IV. A draft press release will be provided. Those are the two items that I have, and you received your weekly report that was encompassing two weeks, so most is in there for your reading. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any questions on anything for members of council? I see on the report, city council report back on the November 4th and 18th meetings, Ms. Sylvia King expressed some concern over children's safety as they cross Orange Avenue to access the new Washington Park pool. She also asked about the, oh, okay.
If you'd like to read that.
It's relatively new. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. So we have changed the report structure ever so slightly, so it will only be once a month you'll receive this report back rather than every council meeting. But as Mayor Lee already introduced, Ms. King was here on the November 4th meeting, and she expressed concern over children's safety crossing Orange Avenue towards the new Washington Park Pool. I communicated with Mr. Campbell, Public Works Director, and he explained that there's already that signaled intersection between Gainesborough and Fifth Street, which has high-visibility crossings already, and as they add in the two-way cycle track, which is part of the ARPA-funded Gainesborough Neighborhood Project, they'll be enhancing those crossings to make them extra safe and visible, especially with the pool in mind. There were other remedies that were suggested, but most of those really don't have any additional safety features beyond what's already in place. Ms. King also asked about the timeline for replacing the plastic on the roof of the caretaker's cottage at Washington Park, and although there have been conversations, and there are several departments involved in the maintenance and preservation of the cottage, there has not been a determination yet about a timeline or about rewrapping the structure of that cottage. Mr. Fitzpatrick also asked about the vegetation along the Roanoke River at Smith Park, so I communicated with Ms. McFall, who's the Director of Parks and Recreation, and she was explaining that maintaining this riparian area provides several benefits to the ecological system supported by the river. So those include minimizing riverbank collapse, minimizing flooding and erosion, and supporting wildlife. So Stormwater and Parks and Recreation will continue to maintain that buffer along Wiley Drive, although there are some invasive species which they'll work to remove later this spring.
Can I make a call?
Absolutely.
You might tell Cindy, we used to have pedal boats there.
Sure.
And they went away in the flood of '85, probably behind the Niagara Dam. That's all we can figure out. But if you go to Washington on the Potomac, around Gravel Point and all that, they leave hardwood trees, but they don't leave what I would call just regular old things. I would like Cindy to rethink that.
Sure.
Because I'm not asking that we take everything down, but you literally are on a trail in Wiley Drive, and you know that you can't see the water.
Right.
So it doesn't do much good to have it if you can't appreciate and enjoy that. So see if there's a way we might compromise that a bit. I know all of that other because that was preached before.
Right.
And a former member of council put most of that in effect, so I won't go there, but be that as it may, it's not always been like it is.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Going back to your Washington Park.
Yes, ma'am. I believe when you get close to the time for the opening, I believe it would be better if the administration did some more outreach, so that, again, because this is going to be a concern with this pedestrian, I'm sorry, I appreciate what has been said from the departments about the intersections, but most citizens are not going to abide by that. They're going to come to the middle, and they're going to try to cross where their barricade is at.
Right.
And it's going to be treacherous. It's going to be some accidents. I see that happening. And also, with regards to parking, addressing that parking.
Sure.
Where are people going to park in that little incove? I don't, I don't know if a report has ever come out as to where people would be parking to go to the pool.
Okay, I will ask those questions.
So I think next year, closer to the time that you're opening, that if that could be addressed, that would be good.
Yes, ma'am, I will do that, thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next issue, Ms. Barbara Reynolds had an alley adjacent to her home. She was concerned because there were trees that had fallen, and there was some conversation over whether the city had vacated their interest in the alley, or whether she was still responsible and all of that. So we finally were able to track down, the right-of-way is still city-owned, so the surface is maintained by the Transportation Division, but they're never responsible for maintaining vegetation in that area. Code's compliance and transportation confirmed that the property owners are responsible for maintenance to the center line of the alley behind her property, but if the trees that were growing on city property were the ones that fell, the cities will clean them up. So I communicated with Ms. Reynolds, I shared that with her, and then sent her the information for urban forestry and the other departments that would come and help clean up if it were a city tree. And then finally, we had two speakers at the previous council meeting, Mr. Clarence Barber and Ms. Joy Truskowski, they were both talking about protections for renters, as well as the ability of landlords to raise rent without increasing services, without letting renters know in advance. And Ms. Truskowski also brought the attention to the Council of two anti-rent gouging bills. So as you all know, because you were the ones that voted, council unanimously agreed to add both of these bills to the legislative agenda. So just for everyone's knowledge, House Bill 721 and Senate Bill 366 allow a locality to adopt rent gouging provisions to include a required written notice two months in advance of any rent increase, as well as maximum allowable increases, and localities may also impose a civil penalty for failure to comply with these provisions. So I think those will go a long way in helping protect our tenants and also kind of holding landlords accountable to some of the improvements and all of those kinds of things. I've also been working with Ms. Hunter, who's our Neighborhood Services Coordinator. She already was aware of Mr. Barber and Ms. Truskowski's concerns that had been working with them, so we're also having conversations about what are their rights as tenants, and also potentially organizing some meetings for renters and other tenants to make sure that they're aware of what their rights are, and to provide them some support and some guidance around how to manage landlords and rent increases and all of those kinds of things. So if you, yes, ma'am.
I just have one, just want to back up to Ms. Reynolds.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say the contact information for the urban forester was shared with her, was that information shared with the urban forester to contact her?
It was not, because when I had all of these conversations, our GIS system was down, so there was no way at the moment to determine whether the tree was city property or her property. So I will go back today, this was right before the holidays, so I had not been in the office to look at it, but I will go back today and try to determine where that tree was, and if necessary, I will definitely let Mr. West know to reach out to her.
Yeah, because I think it's important that the city do its share of contact and not having the citizen reach out to the city, but the city reach out to the citizen since she came asking for the help.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
Just when it comes to the renters.
Yes.
Getting in touch with our fair housing board, they are able to give information about, not, there's not much about landlord/tenant, but what their rights are under the fair housing laws.
Perfect, thank you. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're now down to item number eight, which is reports of committees. We have none. Item number nine is unfinished business, none. Item number 10 is introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions, none. Item number 11 is motion, motion and miscellaneous business inquiries or comments by the mayor or members of city council. Excuse me. Are there any comments by council over the last week, Thanksgiving Day weekend? All right, we're down to vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by city council. I'm going to be calling shortly on the vice mayor to shadow the appointments and reappointments. I ask that, once he places them in nomination, that if you approve, please let it be known by the stating of all nominees. So with that, excuse me, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll. No, I'm sorry, recognize the vice mayor.
That's right.
I like how he's planning ahead.
It's the second to the last meeting, it's beautiful, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, we are appointing Byron Hamler to fill the three-year term of office for Betty Jean Wolfe, ending December 31st, 2024, and appointing him for the next term following that. For the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, we are reappointing Jonathan Lloyd. For the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, we are appointing Joshua Johnson to fill the unexpired term of office for Dr. Eric Anderson, ending March 1st, 2025, March 31st, 2025. For the Human Services Advisory Board, we are appointing Vicki Meeks-Miller to fill the unexpired term of office for Sharon Tolliver Hardy, ending November 30th, 2026. For the Personnel and Employment Practices Commission, we're appointing Carla Terry to fill the unexpired term of office for Milton Hardy Sr., ending November 30th, 2025. For the Roanoke Arts Commission, we're appointing John Black to fill the unexpired term of office for James Davis, ending June 30th, 2026. For the Roanoke Civic Center Commission, we're reappointing Chris Kraft, Kiana Price-Marshall, and Robert Arrington. For the Roanoke Valley Broadband Authority, we're appointing Vanessa Boer to fill the unexpired term of office for Bob Cowell, ending December 12th, 2027, with a residency waiver for Ms. Boer. And for the Virginia Cares Incorporated Board of Directors, we're appointing Angela Trainum to serve as a city representative for a term of office commencing November 1st, 2024, with a residency waiver included for Angela Trainum.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, can you please call it over?
Yes, I will. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
All nominees.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
All nominees.
Ms. White Boyd.
All nominees.
Mr. Volison.
All nominees.
Sorry. Ms. Moon Reynolds.
All nominees.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee.
All nominees. Thank you.
Sounds like we're celebrating, doesn't it?
You hit the points, you hold top of it.
I'm sorry.
No, Bob. Did I beat Ms. White Boyd's time on this meeting?
I think you did.
Okay.
Band-aids.
All right, that concludes council's, city council really meeting. All right, everybody looks at me like that, is it not something else that we need to cover? Okay. City council meeting was staying in recess to reconvene tomorrow, Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, at 8:30 AM at the Burglary Center, Bellabista Room, for a city council summit. And on Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, at 9:30 AM at the city council chamber to convene in a closed meeting for a personnel matter, being the annual performance evaluations of the council-appointed officers. All right, so we start in the morning at 8:30 AM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.